This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, May 2nd. Please stand for the invocation led by Reverend Arif G. Bradley, Mount Sinai Missionary Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let me bow for a word of prayer. Dear God, on behalf of everyone here, I say thank you for another day. We ask your blessings on the people here who have been called to lead this community in which we live. We ask your blessings upon our mayor, the city council, and their staff. We are thankful for their servant leadership in seeking to achieve the common good for all. I ask that you will continually grant them wisdom and courage to govern even amid the conflicting interests and issues of our day. Grant them insight concerning the welfare and what is in the best interest of all Mobileans. Give them the ability to work together cohesively even at times of disagreement. Give them personal rest in their body, their mind and spirit, that they will not burn out nor neglect their families and loved ones during the important work of this city. Give them the courage and wisdom to speak when they must speak and to listen actively when it's time to listen. I pray for the agenda that is set before them today. I pray that you will bless them to accomplish that which has been set. Allow all Mobileans to listen objectively at what is presented and aid all citizens of Mobile to join this council and mayoral staff, not only asking what my city can do for me, but what I can do for my city. God, help us to place love at the center of all that we do as people in this city. We thank you, oh God, that the best days for this city do not lie behind us, but they are yet ahead. Guide this council, guide our mayor and his staff, direct their paths, illuminate the way forward as you see fit, order their steps, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Council President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody on this Tuesday morning. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution for the ordinance, appeal, or public agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address to the council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to address the council would not be allowed to do so on a non-agenda item. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains. For summarizing, the second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decor, there will be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of April 25th.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Yeah, Council President, I'll be making comments on behalf of the mayor who's traveling back to the city of Mobile. He's out of town right now, but he brings greetings to the council and everybody in attendance. I primarily want to announce that USA Today Recognition of Mobile has recently been named the second-best summer travel destination in the United States by USA Today's 10 Best Readers' Choice Awards. Were nominated by a panel of experts that are chosen by USA Today readers. They praise Mobile's restaurants, cultural attractions, and the history of the Mobile. The mayor would like to extend his appreciation to everyone who voted for Mobile and also extend his sincere thanks to David Clark and the team over at Visit Mobile. They invited an editor from USA Today to Mobile earlier this year, and thanks for all that Visit Mobile does to promote our city, and I think we need to recognize Visit Mobile with applause for getting us to that recognition. Also like to announce Market in the Park. Market in the Park is returning to Cathedral Square this Saturday, May the 6th. The event brings local producers and vendors to the heart of downtown Mobile. It offers Mobileans fresh, local fruits, vegetables, products, and produce. They'll also be featuring live, local music every week. Market in the Park will happen every Saturday beginning May 6th and will continue into July the 8th. The market will open at 7:30 AM and will go until noon. You can follow Market in the Park at the city's Facebook for more information. This is also National Tennis Month. May is National Tennis Month, with the Mobile Tennis Center will be celebrating all month long. Multiple events will occur at the Mobile Tennis Center as well as Lyons Park Tennis Center. We'll share more about the events on social media in the coming days, but I have a proclamation from the mayor about National Tennis. I would like to invite Scott Novak, Jace Daniels, Susan Harrell, and anybody else that works at the Mobile Tennis Center down to the podium for the proclamation. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City, New York, to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than 21.6 million Americans played tennis in 2020, an unprecedented 22% increase in participation over 2019, and the highest number of players since the PAC study in 2007. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for Alabamians of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making Alabama communities happier and healthier. And whereas USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits, and to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities within their communities. Now therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Tennis Month in the City of Mobile, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, the second day of May 2023. Signed, William S. Simpson.
Want to thank Mr. Barber and the mayor and the city council for declaring this National Tennis Month. This is happening in cities all over the country. I think on Thursday, Governor Ivey's going to do the same for the state of Alabama. So it's a big deal all around the country. We have 13 events that we're doing in May to kind of celebrate this all over the city. For example, Lyons Park, every Friday at 5:00 in the month of May, has a special event going on for the kids. We have several events going at the tennis center, highlighted by this one. This is kind of our culmination in May. The NEI National Tennis Tournament comes with 600 college kids from around the country. All 600 of those kids are going to do volunteer days for two days. They're going to go to every, to 10 different elementary schools in Mobile and teach tennis in the PE classes all day long, from 8:00 till 3:00. They're going to be teaching tennis in the PE classroom. So kind of a great way to celebrate National Tennis Month and appreciate all you guys do for the City of Mobile with tennis. So thank you again. I do want to say thank you to the two that came with me, Susan Harrell and Jace Daniel from the tennis center staff that make all this happen. I talk about it, they make it happen. So thanks to those two.
Council President, that will conclude the communications from the mayor.
Knowing that Mobile is a truly historic city and we have so many historic places in our city and so many buildings and structures that go back to a form of architecture that we don't see very often anymore. Form-based coating and zero lot lines and 100% masonry buildings and parapets with cobblestone culverts and things that just rock off of buildings that people just don't care to put the care into constructing anymore, much less the dollars into the cost in which it takes to do, to build structures like that. Mobile is lucky, we still have so many of these precious structures left. And it's a pleasure for me today to read a proclamation in respect to Preservation Month, which is May. So if I could, ask those preservations that are here, please come down and join us as I read this proclamation for Preservation Month. So, whereas the city of Mobile founded in 1702 on the banks of the Mobile River is a city rich in history, culture, and diverse architectural styles. And whereas Mobile is fortunate to have this history reflected in its preservation efforts and restoration of vast collections of historic homes and buildings that represent our heritage and define the character of our city. And whereas these historic designations have produced enormous economic impact through hundreds of millions of dollars in investments and renovations, in the fiscal year 2022 alone, investments in locally designated historic districts exceeded $21 million, and hundreds of historic buildings were given new life and corresponding increases in taxable value. And whereas hundreds of jobs have been created and sustained in the construction trades as well as ancillary vocations. And whereas the Mobile Historic Development Commission, Historic Mobile Preservation Society, the Downtown Mobile Alliance, Main Street Mobile, and Restore Mobile Incorporated, in conjunction with the Alabama Historical Commission, and the National Commission of Preservation and Preservation National Commission Preservation Month each may and actively promote the importance of the historic preservation to all citizens and visitors in the City of Mobile. Now therefore, let me, let it be that I, Councilman William Carroll, District 2, and the members of the Mobile City Council hereby proclaim May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month in the City of Mobile, done here at the City of Mobile. Let me again say, congratulations to the Historic Preservation Society in this city. Mobile has the oldest preservation society in the state of Alabama, and most other cities started and founded their societies based on what we've done here in Mobile. So to those of you that know preservation and live it here, I congratulate you and salute you again, and may everybody take note of what we've done and what you're currently doing in the City of Mobile this month.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Council President, I'll call the two jurors out separately. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at 57 North Sage Avenue from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM, 1906 Spring Hill Avenue from 8:00 PM until 11:00 PM, 564 Dolphin Street from 6:00 PM till 12:00 AM, at Cooper Riverside Park from 11:30 AM till 5:00 PM, 180 Lyons Park Avenue from 5:00 PM until 6:30 PM, a second at Lyons Park Avenue from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM, at Medal of Honor Park from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at 762 Marine Street on May 13th from 3:00 PM till 9:30 PM, and May 14th from 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM.
Move to lay off for one week?
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay off for one week.
Public hearings. Public hearing to declare the structure at 356 Burton Avenue, a public nuisance and order it demolished, 611 McDonough Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished, 1056 Gent Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished, 1957 St. Street, and 1703 Wexford Street, public nuisances and order them demolished.
This is open up the public hearing for these particular said items. If anyone present that would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address. Again, this open up the public hearing for these particular said items. If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, David Clark, Visit Mobile.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
City Council Administration, I'm David Clark with Visit Mobile. Some key highlights of our 23 tourism roadmap that you have. Because of the Tourism Improvement District, one of the most innovative private-public partnerships for tourism, in fact, the only one in the state of Alabama, we are able to tell Mobile's story better than ever. Some examples include cruise campaigns, city, and Carnival Cruise Line collaborations. The Carnival Spirit will return October 6th with the best ship and the best itineraries that we've ever had. Book your cruise now. Public Relations and Earn Media, Mobile was featured in travel and leisure, Smithsonian, Southern Living, Food &amp; Wine, Condi Nast, Forbes, USA Today, US Air, Washington Post, and many more, just to name a few. We ran multiple Visit Mobile digital campaigns, which produced 13 million impressions and 5.7 million in spend in Mobile. Visit Mobile's sales managers booked 110,000 convention room nights for the future with our lodging partners, producing a future impact of $96 million in Mobile. This was a record year by double, by double, over historical five years ago. Lodging tax collections were another record year, collecting almost $11 million. Some key collaborations to note, Cultural Heritage Tourism with our county, city, history museum, and Public Relations Company will increase international visibility for the Afriktown Heritage House and our heritage tourism. We provided resources over a four-month period of time for Afriktown to develop storytellers to support heritage tourism. Five new businesses developed out of that. We teamed with the Mobile Airport Authority to promote our international downtown airport. We continue to develop a workforce platform, workinmobile.com, to promote hospitality and tourism as a career, particularly in our high schools and our colleges. We collaborated throughout the state to advocate increase in film, music, entertainment incentive cap that is in Montgomery now. We teamed with stakeholders to develop Amtrak opportunities. The train will be coming down the tracks this fall, we're pretty sure about that. We relaunched the Tourism Ambassador Program and have numerous graduates selling Mobile. We embarked on the Destination Next strategic plan with you and hundreds of others for collaboration of our destination. Results of this plan will be rolled out in June. Mobile tourism supports 17,000 jobs, over 3 million visitors who visit every year, and 1.5 billion with a B in economic impact annually. We cannot restate the significance of the Tourism Improvement District which you approved two and a half years ago, and thank you for that. We just want to thank our lodging community, of course, you, our mayor, and our administration for doing that. This is a game-changing partnership, so thank you so much for your support and everything that you're doing.
And questions or comments from the council, Mr. Davis?
I would just like to thank Mr. Clark and his team for the really extraordinary work they do. You've really got this effort organized in ways that it hasn't been organized before, showing significant results, and I, you know, I love looking at the metrics and looking at the metrics to get better, and thank you very much for everything you and your team are doing.
And other questions or comments from the council? Again, thank you so much, Mr. Davis, for all that you had to do for our city. Madam Clerk?
Kent Blackington Mobile Area Lodging Corporation.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
As in City Council, as David stated, just want to highlight, we've given you a copy of the annual report for the Mobile Area Lodging Corporation. That is the corporation we formed when we passed the TID together. The hotel owners signed a petition, 60% of them in the city, to improve this, to form this self-improvement district, and then you, the city council, passed the statute to make it happen. So it's been game-changing, as David said. We approved that in the middle of the pandemic, which people were jealous about and really surprised about, and I do know that there are two other cities in the state of Alabama that are currently in Montgomery trying to get some legislation changed so they can do that, but not to say they're jealous, but I think they're jealous. The Board of Directors is made up of hoteliers, so we represent three different parts of the city. We represent Tillman's Corner, we represent the West Mobile Quarter, and we represent Downtown. That's the beauty of this thing, because the hoteliers get to take this money, and we get to use it for marketing, and we just try to drive more business into our hotels, into the City of Mobile. So what's happened over the last two and a half, three years, we average about $1.2 million in income and revenue a year. The first thing we did because we were in the pandemic is we didn't spend any money because nobody was traveling, right? But what we did is we embarked on a pretty heavy research company to understand the traveler that comes to Mobile, more than we've ever been able to do before, and we've never had this opportunity before. So we know where they're coming from, why they're staying, how long they're staying, how much money they're spending while they're here. And what we do with that is we can target our marketing efforts towards the right people. Instead of a blanket approach, it's a targeted approach. How we do that, for the most part, is through digital displays, as people are on the internet searching in or about or mobile or whatever, and it's important to note that if they interact with that, they go to a separate landing page which lives on Visit Mobile's website. So we know exactly what our campaign is doing. It's separate from the Visit Mobile campaigns. We are lodging-focused, where Visit Mobile may be selling the destination as a whole, ecotourism and some other things. So we have results. We know those ads have been seen over 16 million times, but our biggest success has been through the use of targeting and campaigning in online travel agencies. So think of Expedia. Expedia is the big one. They own three or four or five or 10 other online travel agencies, but Expedia is like the mothership. With a $200,000 investment through campaigns in Expedia, we know we've seen $2 million in hotel room revenue into the city and into the district. We've sold 11,300 room nights, and 53 different hotels in the city have benefited from that campaign. So very nice to be able to see that and being able to do it. I want to make sure everybody understands, we wouldn't have had the opportunity or the income stream to do any of these projects without the tourism improvement district. So some of the other highlights that are in your packet, we've put some billboards up, which billboards, some people like them, some people don't, but if you're coming into the City of Mobile, if you're coming south, we highlight the West Mobile Corridor. If you're heading east, we highlight Tillman's Corner. If you're heading west, we highlight Downtown. We've been able to host fam trips and help fund the fam trips for the downtown airport, help support and market that. As David mentioned before, we put $100,000 into a cruise marketing campaign, and from what I understand, I believe Carnival's pretty happy with the bookings of the new ship. We assisted in some video creation, which we also use in our digital marketing as well, and then the print, which was mentioned, Southern Living, Food &amp; Wine Magazine. The other thing we've been able to do through our capital program is kind of give back and give back with a purpose. So we assisted in the purchase of the indoor basketball and volleyball courts, which last weekend, we had a huge volleyball tournament, kept everybody full downtown. If we need to, I know there's, we don't need to, but we have approved some money for indoor tennis courts as well to support Scott and the tennis center. We spent $75,000 doing landscaping for the Heritage House to help build that tourism attraction as well, and we know that we have some money put aside for landscaping and beautification of the soccer complex as well. So all the things that draw tourism and draw people to our hotels, all totaling well over $300,000 in capital investment in our city. The Tourism Improvement District lasts five years, and we will, in about six or eight months, start embarking on the journey of passing another Tourism Improvement District, but there is excitement from the hotel community and the hotel owners. It's showing results, it's game-changing, it's something we've never been able to do before, so we just hope we can get that passed again, and it may even be more, a bigger tourism assessment, and maybe even a longer period of time, but we look forward to your support from the council here as we embark on an extension on that district. So just wanted to thank everybody who already highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's someone to speak to one of the public hearings.
Good morning. I'm Pamela J. Lafitte, 6307 Fontaine Drive, Mobile, Alabama 36608. My last presence before you, I came because I had just calendar days, small shy of your last council meeting, receiving my grandparents' earthly home, and you all were gracious to give me 60 days' extension, but within that 60 days, it's been very tedious finding contractors with license and who can do the said work.
Hold on one minute, Ms. Lafitte.
Yes.
No, she's fine.
Okay, then. Oh, okay, okay. All right, I'm sorry about that. Okay.
Did I do something wrong?
Okay, okay, I was just trying to make sure because something else has transpired. Okay.
It was on the agenda for today.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
Okay, okay, all right. And what I'm coming before you for is after having the clarity to my earthly grandparents' home, I've been trying to find contractors who can repair the dwelling. The home is still secured, the front door, the back door, the windows, they're still secured. I'm just trying to find roofers who can do the work, and coming to find out, some of them cannot do the said framing. So when they have additional individuals come out, the framers didn't have license so that they will be able to do the work, and so that particular roofing company will say they will not be able to do it. So I did find one roofing company that possibly can go ahead and do it, and waited on the estimate, and then another company waiting on an estimate, and that's another problem. A lot of the companies are not expediently giving you the estimates in a timely manner. So I did speak with the financial institution, they said, once we get those estimates, then we can go ahead. It would take additional three to four weeks through the mortgage team for them to do what they need to do in order to go ahead and get everything approved, and then the contractor, whoever is selected and approved, can go ahead and start the work. So I'm just asking for additional time, probably another 45 days if possible.
Ms. Gregory?
We actually spoke about this in our pre-conference meeting, and I don't see David at the top, but, oh, over there. David had mentioned this to us, and David, if I'm correct, you asked us to... you asked us to just table this, which would take it off the agenda. Yeah. So, table it, correct? Okay. So, all is good.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming down. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lafitte.
Lakenda Jones?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Lakenda Jones. I live at 856 Charles Street in Mobile, Alabama. On March 7th, 2023...
Ms. Jones, just putting on the mic a little bit closer to your mouth, please. Thank you.
Right. On March 7th, 2023, my life and my family's lives changed forever. My brother Cordell Joseph Jones was a homicide victim in a police-involved shooting at our family's home based upon a no-knock search warrant. The sounds, the visuals, and the fear we felt that day will never leave us because they're eternally sketched in our hearts and in our minds. While my standing here today would not bring my brother Cordell Jones back, my standing here today is the call for change to eliminate no-knock search warrants and to say to this city, never again. Never again the fear, never again the pain, never again the disrespect, and never again the feeling of helplessness by those sent to serve and protect us. What we felt on that day, and still to this day, we want no other citizen or family to feel. No-knock search warrants must be banned because the option of its use is not only a threat to civilian safety, but a threat to officer safety as well. Today, we call on Mayor Simpson, the city of Mobile, county and state, the city of administration and city council to move quickly in signing a moratorium that officially bans the use of no-knock search warrants in the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Director, Barbara, would you like to comment on?
Yeah, I'll keep the comments brief. I think I publicly stated, so has Chief Batiste, that we're actually in agreement, Ms. Jones. We think that no-knock search warrants are a danger to people in the residence as well as to officer safety. It's a law that is through the state, not the city council. The judges do issue that as an option on a high-risk warrant. But it's our position from administratively that we will not execute no-knock warrants. You have my assurance of that. So long as I'm here, we will not do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Nettie Pendleton?
Is Ms. Nettie Pendleton available? Ms. Gosha?
Michael Woodard?
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Council, Mayor's Office, and all the other officials. Thank you for this opportunity to come and talk to you today. My name is Michael Woodard, 4200 Rollins Avenue, Mobile, Botero Subdivision. I used to say I was born on Isaiah Bush and my first words were moon pie. I am a Mobilean through and through. I'm here today because over the last few months, I've heard a lot of talk about Mobile's not annexing or considering not annexing because of race. And it bothers me because I, born in nineteen sixty, you know, I wasn't big enough or old enough to recognize or understand what Martin Luther King said on his "I Have a Dream Day" speech. But I took a little excerpt out of it. And this is what he said. "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live a nation where they would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." You know, and I share that dream with Martin Luther King. I was thinking in this twenty-first century that we're getting close to that point in this country, that we're not judging people just by the color of their skin. We're not electing officials. I'm not voting for people, oh, that's a black man versus a white man. I'm going to vote for the black man. I don't vote that way. I vote based on what you tell me you plan to do when you get into office, your thoughts, your ideas. And I think that's what the focus ought to be. And Mobile ought to be growing not based on race or maintaining a racial balance. Timing is everything. I received this in my mail yesterday from Blueprint for Us, telling me that annexation is going to change the makeup of black and white in Mobile County or the city of Mobile. That should not, to me, it should not be the concern. The concern should be what does Mobile need to grow? We talked about, we mentioned that Mobile started on the Mobile River. It started in a little place, but it has grown over time. But right now, you're saying we want to retard it because we want to keep a black majority in Mobile. Now, I'm a black man. And I know that when they stopped segregation of schools, I thought it was good for me. I thought segregation was bad back then. And guess what? I think segregation of cities is bad right now. I would ask this council, the mayor, to consider not annexing, not consider Mobile annexation based on keeping a racial balance, but consider what is appropriate for the city of Mobile. Does it need to continue to grow? Do we have communities that are not part of Mobile? I look at Sims, that they've started taking up land. You know, Sims has only been around for, what? I think ten years, I understand. I read on Wikipedia, nineteen, twenty-ten is when they voted to incorporate themselves. But guess what they're doing? They're sucking up community. They used, the Sims sign used to be just a mile or so on this side of Snow Road. The Sims sign now is on this side of Schillinger Road, about a mile and a half. I mean, they're growing, but we're retarding Mobile based on race. Doesn't seem right to me. Doesn't seem that's the right direction. Mobile needs to grow. I understand there's federal grants and things that are available to us as we grow and designate ourselves in a bigger population. These things, we're limiting Mobile. We're trying to retard Mobile to maintain an illusion of black power. So, that's what I'm here today to talk about. I pray that we will consider, amen, annexation of Mobile.
Thank you, yeah, thank you so much. Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for letting me have.
Ben Harris?
Good morning. Ben Harris, 203 South Georgia Avenue, Mobile 36604. I first want to begin by commending the Clerk's office because I was actually supposed to be on the agenda last week, but I missed the deadline by twenty-six minutes. And you can rest assured that the Clerk's office enforces that rule. So, thank you for doing such a good job. And that's why I'm down here today. And since I signed up, there's actually been some answers to some of the questions that we have at the community meetings. And I wanted to thank you for having the meetings. One of those is that there is, as I understand it, a commitment to keep District Seven at the current fifty-two or fifty-three percent that it was when the lines were drawn as part of the redistricting. I want to thank you for that. One of the questions I think that has come up is how that's going to be done. If annexation occurs, more citizens will come in, particularly, I think, into District Six, perhaps into Seven and Four. Will the lines be redrawn before the 2030 census? If not, will any of the districts become so large that over the next, what would be, I guess, two election cycles before 2030, there would be a one-person, one-vote issue in those districts? I think that's a question that needs to be answered. I don't know what the answer is, but I think it's a question that needs to be answered. If the lines are going to be redrawn, I would respectfully ask that a map be put out that would show how they would be redrawn. And if they're not going to be redrawn, how will the sizes of the districts be addressed? I think the other question that came up, and I think the administration and Councilman Penn in particular were very forthright about this at the District One meeting. And I appreciated that. The current citywide black voting age majority, I think, voting age population majority, using the city's numbers, I think, is forty-nine to forty-four. And I think we got the very forthright answer that the, that percentage will go down. Forty-nine, I hope I'm not out of time. Forty-nine, forty-four is, I think, in my view and others' views, very close to a working voting majority. In other words, that the next mayor and the next two mayors, the lines, if no annexation were to occur, would very likely be the person who gets the black vote. If that's going to change, what is the message to the black communities about why giving that up is in their best interest? I think that is a question that needs to be answered. And again, I commend you for the meetings. Thank you for allowing me to have the chance to speak. And I urge you to answer those questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roosevelt Edwards?
Good morning. I'm Roosevelt Edwards. My address is 3769 Shipes Lane, 36608. I'm here to speak about the annexation and the concerns that citizens have regarding the current acquisition of our proposal. I look at it as an acquisition. There are many in the community that have asked many questions. I did attend the session last night. That was informative. Thank you. We've asked how the council can promise to maintain a black majority and a black voting age population even when every map before has been somewhat obliterated or skewed. It's kind of difficult to do that with the current maps that were there. But that's why we cannot first make major improvements to our neighborhoods that have long been ignored before considering the annexation. I'm sure these questions have come to you before. We've asked why the PFM cannot first study and provide the citizens of the city a timeline on which, when exactly these many neighborhoods might incorporate or join another city. We've asked why we cannot solve the issues or why so many of our residents are leaving before going out and taking on new areas and responsibilities. These are all important and should be answered in full before any decision is made for this annexation proposal. And then, like the individual before me, there's always a question of motive, why we're doing this. But the big thing is the people are looking for a transparent process. And that's the thing that in yesterday's session there, what I saw was, or I didn't feel, was that process that should be in front of this. What process did we follow? We're counting on you to deliver a better quality of life for everyone, for the residents, the non-residents, visitors and travelers. We need you to communicate the status of that quality, that quality of life and that value as the public evaluate your value and what you're bringing to the table to make our quality of life better. Was there a rubix or other tools that were used to analyze the critical path of this particular project? Or is there a critical path at all? Was there successive criteria laid out that everybody in the public, not only within the council, understood? This again goes back to that transparency I was talking about. I guess my time is up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frederick Richardson?
Good morning to the council.
Morning.
My council member is Corey P. District One. Thank you. I stand before you this morning to oppose the second attempt.
Ms. Richardson, you've been down here twenty-four years. You know the rules. We need your name and your address.
Just because we know you doesn't mean you get out of it.
My name is Fred Richardson, 803 South Indian Creek Drive, Mobile, Alabama. Sorry about that, Mr. President. Start all over again. I stand before you this morning to oppose the second attempt at Westwood Annexation. To do so, we'd decimate or destroy Mobile as a ethnic majority city on a fake pretext that bigger is better. On that note, please follow me as we travel US Highway 45 in Pritchett at St. Stephen Road. We're going to go all the way up to Saveland to 158. We're going under 158 up near Centrale, Alabama, and we would still be in Pritchett. And I'm saying that Pritchett officials thought bigger meant better. Today, Pritchett no longer picks up his trash and garbage and they had to lay off police officers and firemen. Why? No funds. What happened? The annex northward mostly residential, and the city didn't collect enough revenue needed to service the annexed area. That's why they had to lay off. Like Pritchett, Mobile's proposed annexed area, the revenue is simply not there. Drive down Solid Road where homes are worth three million dollars and find me one business on that street. You're going to need the businesses in order to pay for police, fire, trash and garbage. Will bigger, will a bigger city result in more favorable funds? Over the past twenty years, the city of Mobile has received over a half billion dollars in MPO funds for infrastructure work. Ninety-nine percent of those funds were spent on Project Ish of 565. Go visit Ziegler Boulevard and see what MPO funds are doing. Go down to McGregor where they're going to receive twenty-five million dollars for work over there. While Councilmember Small is having to use his CIP funds to upgrade caving streets in District Three. District One applied for MPO funds. They refused to upgrade Highway 45 or to work on any street in District One. On the annexation map, there are four so-called dedicated minority majorities in District One, Two, Three and Four. A close look at the proposed map for District One, Two, Three and Four, you'll see when they add those who consider themselves as other to the white population, it will make District One forty-six point eight percent black, District Two forty-seven point five percent black, District Three forty-seven point eight percent black, and District Four forty-eight percent black. In other words, the black minority majority will end if you vote for annexation today. So, the issue is what, who are other? And I'm giving you the formula. Others is where others live. I have never seen the other in Trinity Garden, Toville, Crichton, not one. So, they leave others sit down there, and the other's going to be the one who takes you down. If you add others to the white population, that's who they're going to vote for. They're not over there for you. They're going to take you down. They're going to take you down. So, I'm asking Councilmember Small.
Ms. Richardson?
Carol?
Hold on one second. Counselor, I would like to grant Mr. Richardson one more minute. Can I get two council members too?
Let's give him two more minutes.
Okay. I just want, just one. That's our rules. That's our rules. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Richardson?
I'm saying that if you take a look at others, others just sit on the map. Others, that's not, the others that go vote for you, others on the other side. And when you add them on the other side, those districts that look like you're just going to have fifty-three percent black, fifty-four percent, uh, 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 others gonna knock yourself out the box, you're gonna be in the forties, all of those districts are gonna be in the forties. It's what you, what you're gonna have to look at. We, I, I have been down here and I supported annexation and I voted against annexation. If you try to annex without the revenue, you, you gonna be another Pritchett. And I'm telling you, Sam Jones took the revenue. When we annexed the last time, we took the revenue. We took Highway ninety all the way to Thaddeus, we took Chittagun Road, we took the revenue. You got beautiful houses out there, I would admit to that, beautiful neighborhoods out there. There are no businesses that if you annex, it's gonna be an apple truck around your neck, it's gonna take you down.
Uh, no, no, I do applaud.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
I just wanna correct the former councilman when he was referring to districts one, two, three and four, I think he meant one, two, three and seven.
Uh, hold on, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Reynolds, go ahead.
That's it, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Davis.
First of all, let me say how happy I am to see Councilman Richardson, uh, here today. I always enjoy my time with Councilman Richardson. He and the late Councilman Levon Manzi and I rode from one end of the state to the other and, uh, in a car. And I'll tell you, there's no better person to have a long trip in a car with than Councilman Richardson. Uh, I do want to, however, correct, excuse me, statement he made. I'm sure y'all remember that the city council hired a third-party independent firm, PFM, to come in and look at the data that had been supplied. Now, PFM is, uh, well-known in these circles and done, uh, studies like this for cities like San Antonio and Memphis. They've done this before. Uh, they're very well-known, they have outstanding credentials. They come in, they came in and they looked at the plans that were, were before us. And, and their, their conclusion was that even under the worst-case scenario, if we annex these areas in, that the city would enjoy an additional one hundred and five million dollars over the next ten years with over thirteen million dollars in the tenth year alone. So there's absolutely no doubt that annexing these areas in is gonna be accretive and significantly accretive to the city's net income. Now, last night, we had a, uh, meeting that's been referred to of about, uh, for District Five and District Seven residents. We had a number of people there. And what, what we heard from the residents was the things they would like to see. They'd like to see more housing, more, uh, low to moderate income housing. They'd like to see their streets repaired, they'd like to see potholes repaired. They, they felt that there were certain underserved areas of the city that needed attention. Now, the best way we can do all of that is have an additional hundred and five million dollars to dispose of over the next ten years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, I would like to say it was good to see, uh, my former colleague, uh, Councilman, uh, former Councilman Richardson, um, come down on this morning. And some of the statements that, uh, he made, you know, I, you know, I do agree with and some I don't agree with. And one of them I do agree with is that, you know, projects that's out in West Mobile have been, you know, federal money went towards it, which I had to take my own CIP money, um, and put it towards Ann Street and, you know, brought, excuse me, Ann Street, Baltimore Street. And, um, basically, you know, would like to have some federal money on that end, I could take my money and put it in other parts of the, uh, the district. And so, you know, with that being said, you know, this is not the second attempt that the Simpson administration, you know, tried to put annexation, uh, tried to do annexation. Actually, this gentleman today, it's been added that this is the, this is the third attempt, not the second attempt, the third attempt. Uh, the first two attempts, you know, CJ Small have voted against annexation because we didn't have no type of study, no, I didn't see no vision for District Three to improve more parks. You know, I'm taking my CIP money and put it towards, you know, other places like on Ann Street and Baltimore Street. You know, I was doing different things that, you know, seemed like other places was booming itself or some places in District Three that had been known neglected for many years, you know, since the year before I was born. And so the first time that I believe was twenty nineteen that the Simpson administration, if I'm not correct, I think it was twenty nineteen that they were successful in annex. You know, I was the only council member, um, that voted against that annexation. Um, um, council of District one, District two, District four, District five, District six, they all voted to bring in two neighborhoods in District six. No revenue, none whatsoever, zero revenue. But I was the only council member that voted no back in twenty nineteen and stated, no, I'm not voting for annexation because there's no study, I don't see no improvements coming into District Three, I don't see no extra revenue coming to the city. Only thing we're doing is bringing in two neighborhoods out in District Six. And that annexation was successful in twenty nineteen. The second time that the Simpson administration tried to annex was in twenty... The first time was twenty, the first annexation was twenty seventeen? Or both of them was twenty, okay, the second time that the Simpson administration tried to annex was in twenty nineteen. Again, no study was done, I mean, I didn't see nothing for District Three. Matter of fact, I brought a slide presentation and show all the collection of District Three. You know, like, this is the reason why I have not, you know, not for annexation because District Three is left behind. So when it hit, I was younger, the second time, you know, talking about it, you know, it was no, it was a no-go, you know? And, um, now this is the third time. Now, I would say that, you know, I believe that the administration have heard CJ and, you know, saying how they are dressed up and they have addressed the things in the past and everything. But if you turn around, look at cities like Huntsville, Birmingham, Montgomery, how they have grown over the years. And for me can just keep on saying no, no, no. And even though I have seen the Simpson administration start giving District Three attention, I cannot just let my city just lag behind. Especially when, you know, when I was a little boy traveling up and down the road, my dad, you know, I used to ask my dad, what is one, what is two, what is three on the back of the, of the cars? My dad was saying, you know, it was the size of the city. You know, Birmingham was number one, Mobile was number two, Montgomery was number three. Now, we can't even go by the task no more because Mobile's just not number two anymore. Birmingham is not number one no more. You know, Huntsville is number one. Who would have imagined that Huntsville be the number one city and projected to have, I think it's three hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and thirty thousand citizens in the next, you know, twenty years? I mean, I would have never imagined Huntsville to be like that. Now, you're looking at Birmingham, you're looking at Montgomery, you talk to the mayor of Montgomery, he looking to annex Montgomery. But I just cannot just continue to hold my city back and keep it from growing. And also, as I see the administration is putting things into District Three into place where it should have been done years ago. And, uh, again, I do agree with my former colleague on some things and, you know, and some things I don't agree with him. But yes, it's time to put more of the federal money, more money into District Three. And I have been seeing that. And also, this third attempt, you know, I don't know how the votes gonna go right now. But, um, this is not the second attempt, this is the third attempt. The first attempt passed, the second one failed, and now we're at the third one. And hopefully, we'll probably see how the third one go in a couple of weeks. And, uh, Ms. Gregory.
Well, I too, uh, am happy to see, uh, our former colleague here today, Fred. It's great to see you and to see everything that you're doing in retirement. I, I don't think you are actually retired, I think you just moved on to something else. So it, it's great to see you. And having served with you for many, many years, I was here when we did the Theodore and Mobile Terrace areas. They were the two areas out of four that, that came in. And, uh, Mr. Richardson is correct in that, uh, we drew in retail to these areas so that it would then support any extra services that the city had to provide. And, uh, it was very well-done. Uh, we had a lot of great experience through our legal staff to help us figure all of this out because we knew back then which of the four were most likely to vote in a support to come into the city. So the retail was actually drawn into those areas. So when Mobile Terrace came in and Theodore came in, we got big swaths of retail to, to support those areas. So with, with these maps that have been proposed, retail areas are also drawn into those because we know that we can't go out and bring in a whole lot of extra people without the revenue to support it. So the retail is there, the revenue is there. Uh, I, I don't think there will be a problem at all. Certainly, uh, Councilman Davis has told us about the PFM study and it is there for everyone to see that it is a net win for the city financially and of course, in population as well.
Mr. Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, also, it's great to see Councilman Richardson come down, thank you so much. Um, he shared some information, um, just like my colleague. There's a lot of things that, um, of course, I agree, some things, um, um, I disagree. Um, couple of things that kinda, even some of the speakers kinda came before us. Um, Mr. Woodard came, he, he kinda talked about a card that went out this past week. And, um, Councilman Richardson spoke of the numbers of, uh, the cards stated about others and you have different race and the numbers are changing. We know that going forward, one, three, uh, one, two, three and seven, the numbers will, will stay the same. I think we need to make sure that we put, we put out accurate information. I believe that we need to stand on whatever we believe. That if you're against something, if you're for something, it's fine being for that. I'm for that. Believe and state what you're for. But we know that one, two, three and seven, those numbers will stay the same. Just like Mr. Harris stated in my council meeting, we know that if you bring in more numbers that throughout the whole city, those numbers will go down, I stated it. Um, I said that in the council meeting, in my district meeting. Um, so that, that's fact, we understand that. So I think it's important to be factual. I think it's also dangerous to put others, when you think about others, others is, you could say Hispanic, Asian, whatever a person consider their race, to put him in a, in a category of Caucasian, I think is very disrespectful. To say that an Asian group, a Hispanic group or what other type of group is gonna vote with one other group is very disrespectful. And as a community, just like that gentleman stated, that we say that Dr. Martin Luther King stood up and had a dream that we wouldn't look at it that way. I, I, I hear that, um, and I heard Councilman Richardson state so many times about DNA and that it's, it's only one race and that's the human race. But then we come and then we break up all these different groups and then we create this and, and you have others and then you put it in this one category and you say, oh, we gonna, they gonna vote to with, with the white category. And that is so disrespectful. And that was shared throughout, I don't know what other districts, but I know it was shared throughout my district. And I had to have residents come and say, what's going on? And this supposed to represent Mobile. And on the card says, stand up, Mobile. We have to ask ourselves, it's okay if you disagree. It's okay to disagree, but to be disrespectful at a certain point, it's, it, that's when it becomes a problem as a community and move forward as a city. I'm sure you haven't spoke to every Asian and every Hispanic and asked them, are you gonna vote with the white people? Are you gonna vote with the Caucasian? But you just put them in a category. And I'm sure you ain't spoke to every Asian, every white person and asked, are y'all voting together? And I'm sure you ain't asked every black person and asked, are you voting together and y'all gonna, this is, I, I, the, the, the shared information, when you don't have the accuracy, to me, is just dangerous. It's dangerous. We gotta stand, we gotta, if, if you're gonna stand, just say the truth. And that's fine, if that's what you believe. When it comes to numbers, I agree with Councilman Richardson from a standpoint, if we don't have the revenue, we shouldn't even look at annex. But based on a third-party study from PFM, we got third study and it shows that we'll be bringing in ten years over a hundred and five million dollars. So let's remove the revenue component out. If you got another reason you're against it, stand on that. But let's be factual. Let's be factual in that situation. That's all, that, that's, that's my only stance, let's be factual in presenting that information. And to my district, and to anyone that felt disrespectful because many people thought that I had something to do with the cards because they saw my picture on it. They didn't even know what was going on. That had nothing to do with me. I would not put any information out to the community, breaking up the community into races. So District one, I had nothing to do with putting that information out because I would never put out information to, to break up our district into races. But to every person that had came out to the meetings, to Councilman Richardson, to everyone who, who's gonna come speak, I have heard you, I have listened, I seriously have listened. But we have no room to be disrespectful and put, and, and Councilman Richardson, you wasn't disrespectful, I wasn't. I just said it after that, I just wanted to make sure. But we have no room to be disrespectful in our way of standing for something we believe in. Just state the facts. But thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Club.
Milton Sappall.
Reverend Sappall.
Reverend Clinton Johnson.
Good afternoon. To the President, to our mayor, all of you here and gathered, I'm glad to be here, it's great to be in the press company again. Remind me of days gone by, I'm Clinton L. Johnson. I live at eleven oh one Dunaway Drive here in Mobile, Alabama. Now, having served on the council previously, you might have to extend my time, otherwise I'd be jealous. In issues before us, regarding the future of our city, what stands before us is a wonderful opportunity and possibility of moving the city to another level and causing it to brace itself to enjoy a richer future. I too have a history. I was here in nineteen eighty-five, representing District Three. Hundred and ninety million dollars worth of drainage issues, open dish, block problems. God bless me, I could serve twenty-four years. We were able to come up with about sixty-six, sixty-seven million dollars, do some work. Problems continues, they're gonna, oh, they're gonna always continue. I'm gonna state a few facts, but I didn't think I had to because you guys know them. Concern has been expressed regarding the, uh, the flight of persons in District one, two and three. At the same time, there is money that has been made available to reseed those areas through the process of affordable housing. That's an economic plus for the area and if the desire that the people want to come back. I never had access to three million dollars for so many years in District Three, I wish I had. But you guys have access and you're currently using three million dollars a year to take your issues. Understand, if annexation unfolds, as I hope it does, that you may be able to access another one million dollars. Now that's four million dollars. That you can serve these districts and address these issues and address these problems in a way like never before. I coined a phrase in nineteen eighty-six, right after I got elected, giving a speech to the New South Coalition. And I talked about Mobile being a city of perpetual potential. Having all of this possibility, all of this opportunity and a failure to seize the moment to be conscientious, to be innovative, to be creative, to be visionary. And without a vision, you perish. So I think we need a vision for the future. You will never do anything extraordinary being ordinary. You'll never do anything unusual being usual. You'll never make a change being the same. So I'm gonna conclude my commentary with a Bible story that I think is appropriate for the moment. The Bible tells us a story of two leopards who house in the Book of Kings during a time in biblical history in which the Syrians had come and wreak havoc in the lives of the Hebrew people.
Excuse me one second, Reverend. Can I get two council members to join me to give them additional one minute? If you can just start the story over, but one minute, one minute.
In life of Hebrew people, wreak havoc in their life, destroy everything. In life, the Hebrew people wreak havoc in their life, destroyed everything. The famine came, there was nothing there. Two lepers in there, the big debilitating, conditioning, situation. Looked at the situation, looked at the circumstance, and they drew a conclusion. If we stay here, we're gonna die. But if we leave here, we might die. They had to make a decision, when was the right time to make a move? And if you're in a dying place, and you've been a sad place, a sick place, a complacent place, you're not gonna change it staying. You got to make a move. I think it's time that you make a move. I think it's time that you progress. I think it's time that you show resilience in Mobile, that you have a political backbone and wherewithal to do what's best for Mobile. I think we need to do things for all people in our city, regardless of who they are and where they might be. I applaud you for the effort you're making. I have sat in those seats, so I know the, the difficulty it is to reach decisions and the challenges that you have, and sometimes you're vilified by people. I commend you. God bless you. I hope you see annexation coming down the pike real soon.
Thank you, Rever. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
It's a pleasure to see Councilman Johnson, Councilman Richardson. I was thirty-four years old when I met you two. The first seven gray hairs on my chin, if y'all remember, were because of y'all two. I think I got them overnight after a conversation that went for three hours. And I think it was in Mr. Richardson's office, where the two of you drilled me over and over and over again about the progress of the city and where the city needed to be. Where y'all needed me to vote. And the conversation was so, so strong, because it was based on the here and now and what was happening in the minute. But it wasn't based on what could happen twenty years from now. I was thirty-four years old and I remember telling both of you, I said, in twenty years, I'm gonna be here. But where is everybody else gonna be? In twenty years, my kids would barely be twenty-seven years old. But where is everybody else gonna be? What is this city gonna be? I remember y'all telling me, quote, "We gotta do this for now." But I kept saying, "It's about the future." I hope the two of y'all remember that, because if we had have done some of the things that we pushed so hard for and that sometimes I got shut down on, because I was considered to be too young and shortsighted, we'd be twenty years ahead today. Twenty years ahead today. And I hope I'm jarring some of those memories. You know, I love both of y'all like brothers, learned so much under both of y'all. I enjoyed the lunches and the conversations that we always had over at the spot of tea that were extremely educational. But this opportunity for the growth of this city financially, for the possibility of growth, both with population, for the ability to expand in the future westward without being blocked, for other opportunities that may arise in the future for additional space, then this is a very well-thought-out opportunity. It gives opportunities for both di- for, I'm sorry, not both, but all districts. It will. It also gives additional opportunities for Districts One, Two, Three, and Seven, with additional revenue and finances in areas that these districts haven't seen before. It gives this whole city an essential look at the future. Growth is essential. Without growth, you don't have anything. We have to have the ability to grow. And in this process, we've taken a great look at it, so that it's both smart and it has the potential for additional growth, as this city continues to grow, long after all of us are here. Long after all of us are here. So, Mr. President, I, I'm more than happy to continue to hear any concerns between now and whenever we vote on this. But I think we've gone through every district now and we talked to as many people as we can. Uh, let me make one last statement. Corey's talked more about this card than anything. But in District Two, let me say that, uh, it may have been a blessing, because last night I had more people than ever before call me that looked like me that said, "We need to move the city forward." That truly surprised me. Truly surprised me, based on what I saw go out in the mail. So I look forward to hear from everybody between now and next two or three weeks, as this process continues to go. And let's pray that any decisions made for this city of Mobile is for the betterment of all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
I have to also chime in a little bit, because I had the honor of serving with Reverend Johnson for many years. And for those of you who don't know, Clinton was one of the very first members of the brand-new city council in form of government in nineteen eighty-five. So he is an original member. And Clint, you know, back then, when y'all formed the city, there was a tremendous need, a tremendous backlog of projects that needed to be done and neighborhoods that were just truly forgotten and neglected. So it was with your leadership and others who began this council and carried on, certainly with Councilman Richardson, that got some of those projects done and got us really, through the decades, 'cause it takes decades, to get us to where we are now and where we are able to move forward, where we have this three million dollars per district and hopefully we'll have another million dollars. So, so I thank you for that. Um, as, as William mentioned, he was on the receiving end of some lectures and some, this is where we need you to be and this is where we need you to vote. Well, I was too, many times. And I just appreciate your mentoring and everything that you all have done for the city and for us to get us where we are today. And thank you both for coming down today and still being a very important part of our city and for providing us with that leadership that we have needed. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pan.
I, I wanna join in with, uh, my colleagues. Thank you, uh, uh, councilmen, but, but both councilmen coming down. You know, one, a lot of times, we, we say that our, our communities were, were neglected, but we forget that. They didn't have a lot of the funding that we have, have now, and, at all. And they had to work with what they had. And, and, and a lot of times, it's some of the reasons why we have what we have now is because of the leadership. And so I wanna thank you all for everything that y'all have done. And so we're grateful for your leadership and everything that you have provided and the service that you have gave to our city and your district. Thank you.
And, uh, thank you, Councilman, former Councilman Richardson, former Councilman, uh, Johnson for coming down. Good to see you both of y'all. Madam Clerk.
Ordinances held over.
Uh, Counsel, um, there has been some. I'm gonna ask that we can probably get a motion to suspend the rules, uh, someone that wants to speak on the public hearing. Not too sure exactly what had happened, but just out of due fairness, I believe that we should do that.
Move to suspend the rules to allow the individual to speak to us on the matter that concerns them.
Okay. And pro per moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, this reopen up the public hearing. Is anyone that's present that would like to address this councilman, come down to the podium by stating your name and your address? Just, if, if you can just hold off one second for us. Can you drop down your mic? The mic.
Oh, I must speak loud. My name is Nettie Pedersen, and I live in the Long Cough community. And I, I, uh, after Hurricane Frederick, I had my little, uh, slab house built there, raised six children, five grandchildren there.
Oh, okay. Ms., Ms. Pedersen, I think you's, okay, you go on to Presentations and Pensions and Communications.
Pardon?
This here is a different topic here. This is a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you not listed up on a public hearing, um.
Oh, well, I, I assigned to appear in the meeting. Um, I assigned to appear to address you concerning environmental concerns.
Ye- yes, ma'am. But this here is public hearing right now.
Well, I'm not understanding public from, uh.
Yeah, it's not your turn right now.
Oh, it's not my turn?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
We- we'll, I'll let you know.
Mr. President, City Council, my name is Willie Rouse. I'm the property owner of seventeen oh-three Wexford Street. The house be torn down. I'm here to ask for some more extension on it. We got fifty percent of it torn down. And so this, this is what I'm asking of you.
Uh, Mr. Carroll. It's another thirty days?
Sixty days will be better. Yeah, what, what my grandson.
You have half of it torn down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm David.
Yes, I'm fine with the extension, but we do need to make sure you got to get your demolition permit.
Okay.
Okay. You gotta get a demolition permit, because there's things involved with demolition of houses, specifically water and sewer lines. So make sure you get those, okay?
I have a permit.
Okay.
All right. All right, you have sixty days, sir. And if you can talk to Mr.
If, if he, if he has a permit, he, he, yeah, he doesn't need, needs to be tabled. Can you verify the permit?
We'll follow up with that then, no problem. But we'll follow.
Oh, well.
Okay.
My wife is totally with it.
Okay.
We'll follow up with that.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. David, so we do need to act as far as tabling?
Okay. Again, let's open up the public hearings. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak on these public hearings? If not, these public hearings are closed. I, I, I got you, uh, Ms., Ms. Pelletan. I know, Counsel. One, one minute, Ms. Pelletan. One, one minute. Ms., Ms. Pelletan, Ms. Pelletan, one minute. Counsel, I know this is unusual, but can I get a motion to allow to go back to President and Presentations and Pensions to the Council for Ms. Pelletan can address the council?
Some of.
The pro per moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Day.
I, I will vote in favor of this, but y'all know that we just can't go down this road consistently. People need to show up at our meetings sometimes. I'll vote in favor of this.
I, I agree. This is one of the subjects. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ms., Ms., Ms. Pelletan, if we can get your full name and your address, please.
Three zero six Brimwood Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero four.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, uh, how many, I have three minutes to speak. An executive order has been entered again by President, uh, Joe Biden on, in April of twenty-three. And he, what he did is de-emphasize the pre-existing, um, Clean Air Act. And there is definitely no clean air in my community. In fact, this, this began, it had its advent in twenty-eleven, when I have five of my grandchildren there. I got their pictures here. And they graduated from high school now, and they have health conditions as a result of that. I filed a motion in court for them to obey the perpetual, perpetual and continual spraying in my neighborhood. At that time, I had three or four senior citizens in there. One of the senior citizens died with an oxygen tank. Her oxygen tank gave out of air. Two of the citizens lived down the street and they began to have problems with asthma. And there is another senior citizen on the street who is possibly ninety years old. She cannot work out in her yard like the elderly does. Doctor told her to stop picking up dead leaves off the ground, because it's contaminated with herbicides. These perpetrators of this, um, criminal act is what it is. I did research on it. And, uh, they're dispensing it out of their yard and it's flowing over the fence in other neighbors' yards. When I started calling the police in twenty-eleven, Captain Garland had me committed to alter part, saying that I was mentally unstable. I had a nine-year-old girl going in the fifth grade. I had a thirteen-year-old girl in the eighth grade, a twelve-year-old boy in the seventh grade, a fourteen-year-old girl in the ninth grade, and I had a boy that was fifteen years old in the eleventh grade. All of them in advanced classes. He, the, the person that was doing it, the, the aggressor, I would say, is the person that was emitting the chemicals, because he was upset by the boundary line. When I called the police, he said that because I called them fifteen or twenty times, it was a felony. When I got to alter part, the boards of psychiatrists and psychologists reviewed all the, all the witnesses, and they verified that he was spraying. Two of the neighbors' children started getting sick from these chemicals. And Floyd King, which is a present activist, constantly was in my yard and we were discussing his movement. He was sprayed with it. Pretty soon, he had to start taking B-12, because it was affecting his memory. But he has since died. Two of my children now have a living with illnesses that was caused by this. My nine-year-old was in the fifth grade. She got sprayed every morning she left for school, in the evening when she came home from school. This, these chemicals caused them to become very aggressive.
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Pelletan, yeah, those are your three minutes there. But what you're speaking of is really the Health Department. Am I correct, Director?
No.
The Health, the, yeah, you, yeah, Ms. Pelletan.
All these, all these organizations will be called.
You had your three minutes. But those are the Health Department. The city don't have no regulations over that.
Well.
But thank you so much for coming down. Thank you.
I'll be back.
Ordinances held over. Zero two, zero twenty, ordinance to amend presentation of petitions and other communications to the council.
So moved.
Second.
And pro per moving second in the discussion, I would like to, uh, ask our attorney if he can just really just explain, uh, this particular ordinance, just for the public knowledge.
Thank you, President Small. Uh, the ordinance to amend the, uh, public address to the council has two major components. The first one is that it adds two subsections, allowing the presiding officer, whether it be, uh, you, President Small, or, or Vice President Gregory, to maintain order in the chamber when somebody causes a disturbance that interrupts proceedings. Uh, the, it, the simple version is just, uh, the president of the council will give anybody who creates a disturbance in the chamber the opportunity to bring themselves to order, meaning stop the disturbance, at which point the president may have them excluded from the chamber for the rest of the meeting. The second part of that portion is that when somebody has been removed twice in that manner from the meeting, they then get an automatic thirty-day ban from attending council, council meetings. And then from that point forward, anytime that same person is excluded from the chamber, they will be subject to an additional thirty-day ban. That's the one component that this does. The other component just, uh, is technical and generally removes the requirement that people addressing the council have to state their address openly at the podium in front of everyone. People will still have to provide their addresses to address the council, but they only have to do that in writing to the clerk's office. They don't have to state it openly in the public meeting. And I think that's, that's, that's a pretty good summary of what the ordinance does.
Except for public hearings, they do, they have to give their address at that time during public hearings?
Uh, regarding a property?
Yes.
I believe they have to state which property they're there to speak about. I don't know that they, if, if, they may or may not live there, but I believe the way everything's written, they just have to provide their address. everything's written, they just have to provide their address at sign-in or when they sign up.
Okay. Okay. Another discussion from the council. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Twenty-two zero twenty-one, ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-nine, Article ten, Division one, and Chapter twenty-two fireworks of the Mobile City Code.
Move the layover two weeks.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it over two weeks.
Sixty-four zero twenty-two, rezoned property located at forty-seven oh one Halls Mill Road from I-one, from R-one to I-one.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero one zero twenty-three, ordinance to amend Chapter forty-four, Article four of the Mobile City Code entitled Historic Preservation.
Motion to lay over one week.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it over one week.
I'll call these out individually. Forty-two twenty-five, declare the structure at twelve-ten Alba Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move to table.
Second? And promptly moving second to table in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Declare the structure at nine-nineteen Nelly Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Declare the structures at fifty-nine thirty-seven West Haven Drive South and forty-nineteen Tulsa Drive, public nuisances and order them demolished.
Move to table.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Forty-three seventy-eight, declare the structure at six-fifty St. Michael Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to lay over thirty days.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it over thirty days.
Forty-three eighty, declare the structure at forty-four hundred Government Boulevard, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Zero nine four forty-three, transfer funds from District Four discretionary account to Mobile Parks and Recreation General Fund to assist with the purchase of a new utility vehicle to service Memes Park Athletics.
Move to table.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Thirty-seven four four seven and thirty-seven four four eight are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license and a retail beer table wine off-premises-only license to Viking Liquor Store and Viking Convenience Store on Halls Mill Road.
Move over to lay over for one more week.
Second?
Promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it over one week.
CIP resolutions held over. Twenty-one four sixty-five, authorized contract with Dell Consulting for electrical and lighting improvements at Spring Hill, Harman, and Hillsdale Community Centers. Twenty-one four sixty-six, authorized contract with Christian Prius Landscape Architecture for the design of a new recreation facility at Stock's Park.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolution's held over. I'm gonna, going to call out three that'll be held over. The administration has asked, we're going to be held over. And that's going to be zero one four sixty-seven, twenty-one four seventy-six, and twenty-one four seventy-nine. Zero eight four sixty-eight, four sixty-nine, four seventy, four seventy-one, four seventy-two, four seventy-three, four seventy-four, and four seventy-five are approving purchase orders for fuel for various city departments to Vulcan Incorporated for street signs, technical and scientific application for desktop computer, computers and monitors, to Ward International Trucks for truck cab and chassis for a signed truck, to Noble Supply Logistics for smart ray vision portable X-ray system, to Sandsum Equipment for rear load garbage truck, to Carisoft Technology for annual renewal of Concur travel management software, and to CDW Government for one-year subscription for network security software.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Twenty-one four seventy-seven, authorized contract with Chris Francis Tree Care for citywide tree maintenance and removal services. Twenty-one four seventy-eight, authorized contract with Mott McDonald, Alabama, for engineering and design services at the Mobile Civic Center.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero one four sixty-seven, authorized agreement with the State of Alabama for Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail Section six N. Twenty-one four seventy-six, authorized change order number two with McCory Williams for design and engineering services of the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail Section three. And twenty-one four seventy-nine, authorized contract with McElhaney Construction for the construction of the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail Section six N.
Move the layover one week.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it over one week.
Consider resolutions being introduced, zero three four eighty-five through sixty-five sixteen.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
Zero three four eighty-five, four eighty-six, and four eighty-seven are reappointing Richard Meadows to the Electrical Examiners Board, reappointing Stephen McNair to the History Museum of Mobile Board, and appointing Jason Kane to the Industrial Development Board. Zero nine four eighty-eight and four eighty-nine are transferring funds from District One discretionary account and District Two discretionary account to Parks and Recreation's travel account. Thirty-seven four ninety, uh, is recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to bottles up Mobile for Friday Night Live at Mardi Gras Park. Thirty-seven four ninety-one is recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to bottles up for sip and paint at Mardi Gras Park. Forty-four ninety-two, four ninety-three, four ninety-four, and four ninety-five are declaring the structures at three fifty-six Burton Avenue, six eleven McDonough Street, ten fifty-six Gent Street, and nineteen fifty Sabbath Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight four ninety-seven, assess cost for removal of weeds, Weedling Group sixteen thirty-four. Sixty-four ninety-eight, four ninety-nine, five hundred, five oh one, five oh two, and five sixteen are determining appropriations to Main Street Mobile, ER Dixon Elementary School, the Village of Spring Hill, one hundred Black Men of Greater Mobile, Compassion and Action, and Memes Park Athletics, serve a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Forty-four ninety-six, declare the structure at seventeen oh three Wexford Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move to table.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
CIP resolutions being introduced, twenty-one five oh three.
Per council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolution's being introduced, zero eight five oh four through zero two five twenty.
Per council rules, these will lay over for one week as well.
Call for public hearings, forty-one five fourteen, call for public hearing to rezon property located at six fifty Michigan Avenue from R-one, R-three, and I-one to I-one, scheduled for May thirtieth. Forty-one five fifteen, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Africatown Freedom Tours to operate a bus service, scheduled for May sixteen.
So moved.
Second?
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on, uh, this Thursday, the fourth of, um, May, uh, we have a community meeting to discuss the changes to the MHDC ordinance and how commissioners or, uh, selected and any other small changes to the, uh, ordinance that supports the State Enabling Act. Uh, if you, uh, live within the historic districts of the city of Mobile in District Two or any historic district, please come out. I know that all historic districts except for one Ashland Place, uh, and, and some of the other small locally designated areas are in District Two. So if you have any questions or concerns about changes, that is this Thursday night, six P.M., that is this Thursday night, six P.M., at All Saints on the corner of Anne and Government, All Saints on the corner of Anne and Government. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Five, Councilman Day. District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules Committee will meet at one o'clock, uh, in the council conference room regarding the MHDC ordinance.
Councilman Reynolds. District One, Councilman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, um, I had the opportunity to have family time at the Tomerville Branch, um, library. We had an awesome time with the families in District One. We played games, we had karaoke, and I look forward to doing that, that event again, probably during the summertime. And then I also had a great time at Dodge Elementary School. Shout out to the students. They gave me a nice mug and, um, tumbler. And, um, and we had, um, I had reading time, and they asked a lot of great questions about city government. They're, excuse me, they're learning the, about the three branches of government. And so I had a great time. So, um, we looking forward to, to doing more of those events throughout our, our district. But, um, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Pan. District Seven, Vice President Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, last Friday, um, I was, uh, happy to represent the, the city and the council at, uh, the Mobile Alumni Chapter of the Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity for their annual, uh, Joe Smith Senior Memorial Scholarship Golf Tournament. Uh, they had about ninety golfers. It was a beautiful day. We were able to get the tee off in the middle of two bad rainy days. So, um, they are certainly doing something right, and this is a terrific opportunity to fund scholarships, and I was also happy to, uh, be a sponsor for that. This coming May eighteenth, we will be holding a neighborhood meeting for the LeBaron Woods, uh, neighborhood. The focus of the meeting is to provide an updated plan from a developer who wants to put in a brand-new subdivision behind their neighborhood. So that is the focus. However, uh, when we had a, a pre-meeting, if you will, there were some questions that were more of a general neighborhood feel. Uh, so we have invited members of the administration to be there to, um, answer some of those questions and provide information. But the focus of this meeting is for an update to the proposed developer's plan for a new subdivision behind their homes. You should get postcards in the mail if you live in LeBaron Woods, but it is again on, um, the eighteenth. It will be at the Moffett Road Baptist Church at six o'clock P.M.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory, and to the citizens of, uh, District Three. Um, this coming Friday, uh, May the fifth, twenty-twenty-three, we will have a, uh, Maysville Community Neighborhood Cleanup Day. Uh, this will take place at eight o'clock A.M. Uh, we'll meet at the, uh, Bon Hall, Randa Park, which is also known as Duval Street Park, uh, from eight A.M. And with this cleanup, we're going to ten-thirty A.M. Inviting all the citizens to please come out on this coming Friday to join us as the city administration goes out and trying to spruce up Maysville. Again, that would be this coming Friday, May the fifth, from eight A.M. to ten-thirty A.M. And again, we'll meet up at the Duval Street Park, and again, inviting all the citizens in the community, please come out on this coming Friday and, and best help spruce up our neighborhoods. Is anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. Uh, request, um, in light of the added agenda item to the agenda today for immediate publication of the resolutions attached to each agenda item, the publication of the resolutions for the added agenda items, immediate publication, so that it is public knowledge, considering the fact that by council rule, it is laid over for one week, the res, the resolution needs to be attached to those items and immediately published.
Anything else from this council?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that, that, I don't know if that needs to be a motion or not, and I don't know if we have to reconsider it. That is, it needs to be immediately published today. It needs to be pu, added today with the add to the agenda that was requested, if it's going to be an add. If not, it will have to be added next week with extended time, so.
Yeah. Can you speak into the mic?
They were added to Novus this morning, but I will go ahead and have them published in the land app and put on the city's website. The complete resolution.
The complete text was added to Novus?
Yes.
Of the four?
You're welcome.
Anything else? Uh, second? In the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?